Do you broadcast with you? Anybody else?
No. The problem is. I knew all the parents. You're probably right. When Steve graduated, you were the old fart. Now I'm the old fart, with Evan being the potato head.
Yeah.
And I hardly know any of the parents anymore. And that's a shame.
You know, when you and Joe did y'all's commentary of the theory, you know, you had like a comment commentary of very cool people versus.
I was definitely the straight guy. He was a comedian.
But it was a good. All right, six o'clock.
Well, good evening. At six o'clock, I'd like to call the public hearing for the FY 2021 budget, public hearing to order. It's Tuesday, September eighth, 2020. And I'd like to welcome everybody here that's viewing from home and those that are here that have come out tonight as well. Thank you. We'll first have our invocation by Reverend Jones and then our pledge allegiance by Councilman Scott Tipton.
Goodbye, Andrew Brown. I will help the Father, our Lord, our God, create up the heavens and the earth. And thank him for what you have given us, heaven's homestead, this land, this city. Praying, oh God, for your divine strength upon us, continue to have mercy upon us through this pandemic. Because we're all powerful in the form of your hand. We pray tonight for guidance upon us, the mayor and his council. We thank you for those who are here tonight. When we say end, they will be pleaded in your sight. In Jesus' name we pray and we thank you, Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you. Let's see, we need to approve our agenda for tonight. I've got two things I'd like to add as a three A, two amendments. One is just business recognition for making Market Street magnificent program. And the second one is a date for our workshop that Michael had told us about, events workshop. Any other additions to the agenda?
I imagine we approved the amended agenda.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, two things. I wanted to get your opinion on it and also approval if we decide to do that. I'd like to start recognizing some of our businesses that made the most improvement on Market Street and maybe letting them come in. And instead of, you know, we typically will have a community service award, but just recognize them and maybe have a picture of their businesses. And I'd like to ask Pascagoula Pride to act as like a little, or the group that would look at the different businesses and, you know, make a selection for us. And we could do that either monthly or at each of our council meetings.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We tend to focus on businesses on Market Street. Would you approve or would the city want?
I think probably what we could do is start with Market Street since that's where the crux of our program was. And then maybe after a month or so, or, you know, six weeks, then we could branch out to some other parts of the city, if you, if y'all would like to.
I thought we were gonna go somewhere else after ninety days.
Okay, that's fine.
I thought that was the premise behind the program, to go somewhere after ninety days. And I didn't think we were going to give awards for who did the most. I thought we were recognizing, just improving your business.
Well, I was gonna do it to say who made the most improvement in their business as a way to recognize them. I'm open for recognize. I just wanted to find a way to recognize people in public that are making the effort to improve their, you know, their appearance.
Let's recognize everybody. I mean, if ever, whoever's, whoever is improving their business, let's recognize them, because they're improving the city of Pascagoula. Let's don't do it. Let's don't do it based on.
That's simple, yeah.
Well, how do we, so we don't, don't, don't recognize anyone?
Well, let's recognize them all.
Well, I mean, how do you do that? That's what I'm saying in a.
I think we recognize them all, just like we used to feature, we used to feature a business every week when we had a meeting.
Well, just like what you said, you start Market Street, you visit every street with a business.
Well, well, just. Everybody who's, who has, who has improved their business, let's feature them, recognize them, and feature them.
Right, so just put their picture up there. I was gonna have some little paper that I was gonna suggest that we just say, thank you for doing that and.
Let's do it. I mean, let's, we used to do this when we first came on as, as council. We recognized business spotlight maybe. We had a little, a little video of them and, I don't know. Somebody came to the meeting and we recognized them.
It may take a while, but we'll eventually get everybody.
That improves their business.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I don't know. Where do you start? I guess what I'm saying.
And maybe you could do a couple.
Yeah, I mean.
Per meeting.
I'm all for doing it. I just said, I don't know, where do you start? Do you do every single business or just the ones that made improvements?
Just the ones that made improvements.
Do it not by month.
I mean, isn't that, wasn't that what you were gonna do? Just the ones who made the improvements on Market Street?
Yeah, I was just gonna recognize the people that had made the most improvements on their business and just have a little selection group and just kinda go through.
That's awesome.
Who's been going out putting the signs in the businesses?
Yeah, the ones who are getting the sign.
Which career, who's the person going out?
It's Pascagoula Pride.
So that makes a.
Along with Pascagoula Main Street.
Sounds good.
I just wouldn't, I wouldn't assign a, you know, because you made more improvements than this one. If you made improvements, I think we should recognize them. Because it, it has helped Pascagoula tremendously. That's just my opinion.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, however y'all would like to do it. I'd like to just find a way to recognize them. I guess the question is, how do you find the, you know, how do you do the process to do it? I guess we can just take every single business that made a improvement and then maybe recognize two per meeting.
Right.
That would, I don't think would be too long. You know, five minutes of business or something like that.
Just start at the beginning of Market Street and work our way down?
North Market, South Market.
Okay. Well, Katerina, can you kind of assist us on, just talking with Pascagoula Pride or Michael, either one, about getting the list of the ones that they recognize for making improvements? And we'll just start at the beginning and work our way down?
Sure, I can reach out to Mrs. Q.
Okay.
We're talking about the ones that we have already recognized since the program started, right? The ones that we've already selected?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
The second thing I wanted to ask about is a date for our workshop. It was the workshop related to services for the city. I guess I was gonna ask about the January twenty ninth date, if we have that, if that's a very old date.
September twenty ninth?
September twenty ninth, I mean. If we can, we can add. Does that have a lot of, is that just end of the year information or?
We're going to be addressing invoices and insurance. That's what we normally do every, every September. At the end of fiscal year, we do those items. So those are the only two we have right now, or we might have.
I, I think that's gonna be a pretty busy meeting.
Okay. All right, well, if that's gonna be a really busy one then, let's, I guess, just let Michael know on the other dates that he had, that he had listed. And then we'll just try to pick one that has the best attendance. So, yeah. All right, next, city manager, number four.
Yes, sir. The item that's gonna be discussed first pertains to the CGI communications agreement that was brought before council in July. The initial outlay of the agreement address provided an opportunity for Pascagoula to do promotional videos and to also reach out to local businesses as well to promote their, their businesses. As of right now, they are still in the process of working on those videos to promote the city of Pascagoula. And that's where it's currently at. I know there's some questions and I'm happy to try to answer them along with Katerina as well. Questions?
I vaguely remember ten years ago getting a phone call somewhat similar to this when I was at my prior firm. Somebody was, the city was doing something and it was getting an ad that was on the website. And I think I pretty quickly, you know, politely declined. And, and one of the things that I don't understand, I read the agreement that was approved, is, is somehow our community video program contingent upon them obtaining sponsors through videos from various businesses, whether it's healthcare, legal, real estate, or whatnot? Is that, either one of you? I don't, I don't see a price or anything like that in this. So I just was curious whether that's a contingency.
No, sir. The videos that are being produced for the city of Pascagoula are free and it's not based upon how many businesses or the economic businesses for that production.
Okay. I think one of the, one of the complaints that I've heard, and I've, I've heard one myself, is that, one, there was almost no notice. And two, the comment was, can whoever's doing the, whoever's doing at least the solicitation, solicitation at least pronounce the name of the city correctly. The, the company is based out of Rochester, New York. And I don't know what exactly was said, but apparently the name Pascagoula didn't slide off their tongue as easily as it comes off of ours. That, that's a real minor point. I don't mean to harp on all that. But I think what has surprised at least the individual that contacted me was sort of the imprerture or the sanction that came from the city. And it's, having read the agreement, it's somewhat there, but the extent to which it's being used as a solicitation kind of caught them off guard. I mean, or at least the individual I spoke to, so.
I've spoken with the rep from CGI. And I've, I've heard some people who have had pleasant experiences and some people who have not. So I think that they might have more than one person who is reaching out on their behalf. But the representative from CGI who I'm in contact with, I've spoken with them and asked them to make sure that they're not implying that it is expected of someone to buy, to purchase the ad.
So I, I got a telephone call that was not pleasant regarding this. And I was actually taken aback because it, it took me a while to figure out what they were talking about. And actually, I didn't figure out what they were talking about for, for quite some time. I didn't put it all together. And when I went back and pulled this from the, from when we approved it, I would have never put all the information together from the phone call I got to what we approved. So in the future, number one, can we never, ever, ever put anything like this on the consent agenda? Because that does, this doesn't belong on the consent agenda. This should have been explained to us, what was gonna happen, the cost that it was gonna go out to our local businesses and, and all that kind of thing. That, that should have been explained to us. Because, well, first and foremost, we have a crew of volunteers trying to fund the sportsplex, get sponsors for the sportsplex. I think right now, the Jackson County Economic Development Foundation is trying to get sponsors.
They're always trying to get sponsors.
And now we have this going on. So, as someone who does this for my office, man, it gets, it gets tiring answering the telephone and somebody always wanting money. Scott, you probably know it. I mean, it just gets, it gets overwhelming. So, having said that, I just really had no idea that we were doing this. So I was very taken aback when I got the phone call I got. And I really, um, it, it, I'll just say, it took me a few minutes to wrap my head around it all. And they're using names, individuals' names. They used, I know Dr. Demetropolis's name and I know they used your name. And that, as if you handpicked that business to be called.
Right, and I've spoken with the, the rep about that and he's speaking to his people. And I understand, you know, the sponsorship part aside of it, I do think the video program itself is going to be very beneficial for, for the city. And I do think it's important to note that their ability to sell ads is not contingent on their, what they will produce for us.
Yeah, I would, one little comment is, is, we've asked them to do something as far as, you know, we've talked many times about trying to promote Pascagoula in a better way. Videos are good. Isn't this the group that did the emerge video or somebody local?
They did the city of Goshu.
Okay, yeah, so, you know, I'm with Jennifer. I think, you know, this is a couple times now. The other one was the warranty program for the sewage stuff. Kind of didn't come across when people from out of state called our citizens saying, hey, you did this warranty program, you know, kind of deal. So I think maybe a little more detail on the front end. But, you know, like I said, I know we asked for something several times as far as promoting Pascagoula and what's a good way to promote Pascagoula. I think it just had some unintended consequences. I remember several years back, the recreation department had a program and they did it in-house, very similar to this. Is that you did a year sponsor and you signed up for so many dollars and everything that they put out, they put the company's logos on it and things like that. But it's a little scaled down version of that. But I think it's a good idea. I think it just, it came with some unintended consequences from people calling that nobody knew.
So one thing, can we, is, can we get a list of who they contacted? And I'm asking actually for that field naming committee. Because, you know, this was a hefty cost. So you don't, I don't think you wanna.
Oh, same thing.
Yeah. So if we could get a, a list of that and provide to Scott's committee.
Yeah, list of who they contacted or who did.
Who they, who they contacted.
Yeah.
And who, I guess who's committed. And I think y'all meet this week.
We did, yeah.
That would be helpful to them.
I called Phil Tortus, the mayor of Goshu, just to ask him what his experience was over the past year. And he said it was good. They haven't had any problems themselves. And he said it was a good promotional video for the city. So that was his, you know, experience, if that's helpful.
You know, and that, I mean, I guess if we were looking for a promotional video for the city, is, was that our intention?
Well, the intent, so the way that it's gonna be set up is they're producing a total of six videos for us that will kind of be, they call it like a video tour, but different chapters that talks about, like, if someone were coming and interested in either buying a house in Pascagoula or looking to become a resident, that has every place or investing, it has everything in one place. A little welcome video that has generally about Pascagoula, talks about quality of life in Pascagoula, the recreation, our education system, economic development opportunities. And then part of their sponsorship is community organizations and nonprofits that help make the community what it is. So from a recruitment tool from places like Ingalls and Chevron that I've talked to, it'll be useful for them that they can point potential employees to this spot where they can learn more about Pascagoula, because they're trying to convince people to live here. So that's the intent, is to provide an outlet for people to learn more about our community, doing a good thing, something in our community.
And I guess that was my other thought, you know, with, with resources like Ingalls and Chevron and, and the hospital even, you know, and our school district. You know, with the resources we have and with the guys at the police department. And I feel like, is that something we could have pulled those resources together and put together a video using, and Tim Wall, and put together a video rather than spending this money? Not that we're spending any money, but asking business, local businesses to spend the money, using the resources we have here. I know I've seen things that the hospital's done and, man, those videos are beautiful. I've seen things that the school district's done. Those are beautiful. Seen things Tim Wall's done. I mean, yeah, I just think, did we, did we even contemplate using resources from here, rather than sending the money out of town? So, just another thought. You know, I'm big for not sending the money out of the city of Pascagoula.
Any other questions, comments? All right, yes, for B, resolution?
Yes, sir. The, the next item pertains to the installation of surveillance cameras at a few of our local parks. I know this was mentioned to council a few times about combating the vacancy issue that is affecting IG Levy. But there are also some other areas that I think would be vital to install security cameras at. As you'll see in the proposal, Mississippi Power is offering twenty-four surveillance cameras. There will be seven at IG Levy South. There will be two at IG Levy North. There will be eleven at the sports complex. There will be four at the point. Aerial maps have been provided of the areas that will be covered. The total cost will be one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars a month. This will be leased for five years. We will not keep the surveillance camera equipment after the five years. The primary reasoning behind that is after five years, a lot of this equipment will be outdated. And so we'll want to keep with the current times and current system. But the goal in going up the police department, the parks and recreation department, was to fit areas that might be blind sites and allow us to have better access and surveillance of the different parks of the community. The plan would be that the surveillance camera footage would be fed to the dispatch room where they have videos and a monitoring system in place, which would help us keep better track of those areas that sometimes during nighttime or other odd hours are hard to watch and stay focused on twenty-four seven.
So Michael, would you be able to monitor these from your office also?
I'm sure I could be. I just need to, I think you can get sure to your final action. Get it set up.
I know, I know there are more too, where I think there is. There are two locations that definitely need cameras. Probably a little outside of the park that is trashed quite often. There are these locations where people come to stop. We enter past the door. You can hit the whole mobile coming off of industrial road. That's a trash spot. Arch, that, that, that interest on Arch in Old Mill, I'm sorry, industrial is not even close to what happens right there. Right there at Cerrito and Pimpico, they trash that and all around the curve. So I do know, since I lived there, there was exactly two of those cameras.
And to your point, counsel before that, I think this will be great accountability tool for folks who just throw their garbage out. I think no one's, no one's.
Yeah, we do. Yeah.
So this will be monitored at the police department? Is that?
Yes, sir.
People that, and of course, they have the enforcement, armed force anyway, so.
Michael, will there be signage put up in the parks?
Yes, that also to encourage and deter folks from realizing that there are people watching them twenty-four seven.
Good job.
Price tags seem to a little steep to me. I mean, maybe not for the equipment we're getting, but a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Nine hundred and twenty.
Two thousand.
For five years.
Okay.
Yeah. A couple of dollars a year.
A couple of fires, a couple of fires a month would take care of that bill, you know, if you stick for five hundred dollars.
What you gonna find? Do you think the police are gonna go back to the thing and find people?
I was assuming that the cameras would be for tag numbers mainly, because people are throwing these, these trash out of vehicles. I don't know. I mean, I live there and I know they're throwing out deals. I was at an assumption that, that you can get tag numbers and just it. I don't know.
Well, Charlie and I have spoken. We figured out a plan to have that in upcoming budget, have that taken care of. The, the other component is, not just from a litter standpoint, but from the property damage standpoint. I mean, if you go to IG Levy South, there are boards torn off of buildings. And so there's starting to become a very large cost associated with not having those areas watched twenty-four seven. So, so I think there is gonna be some costs that we could from having those surveillance cameras in place.
And could this allow us to open up the restrooms again with more sign?
That's something that we haven't explored, but I think.
The camera ain't the matter.
No, no, no.
Come on the front door, you know who goes in there.
We wouldn't go that far, counsel.
I would hope not.
But, but I think if having those signs in place and having those cameras starts to deter people, I think that definitely would be.
I think that's a point.
Then you think you can find the money to be able to support that?
Yes, sir.
Is it coming out of rec budget?
I mean, it's coming from the rec budget, recreation department budget, but it's the funds are coming from the rec funds. So it's a general fund.
Any further questions about the resolution or comments? Not, can I hear a motion?
Yeah, I know the spark light is in and I think there needs to be revision by Michael to, to just have money in Western as opposed to the matter. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the site view proposal and authorizing the entry into, or execution of the agreements with Mississippi Power and Sparklight as amended regarding the standard terms addendum.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, let me say one thing. Can we, I mean, we can designate that these cameras are gonna be going where they're specified. I mean, we need to always be aware of where we have cameras, I think. It won't be anywhere outside of these locations, right?
Yes, sir. That, that's where they'll be placed at.
Is, and I guess, and I should have asked you, I guess the people that are the camera experts to determine where the optimal places that we need to have the coverage are, right?
Yes, that it was a combination of that, also the police department and the parks and recreation department recognizing the areas where most folks congregate at. So that was the, the main.
So one camera behind all plate wouldn't do a field? I mean, why are there eleven in the sports?
Well, that's to cover the whole type of referent. It's not just the home plate focus.
Well, I was talking about if you catch off. I mean, you had seven, you'd catch all the fields where if any vandalism would happen and then maybe a couple more to catch the outbreak.
Well, I think outside of the fields too, folks just hopping the fence to the general common areas, that's something that could be very problematic later on.
Well, if they're not in the right area, it's still gonna be trash to get to your house.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, next, number five, our budget presentation.
Well, mayor and councilors, tonight we have the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget. We've had two previous budget workshops. Before we begin, I do want to thank Charlene for all the great work that she's put in on getting this set up for us. And secondly, all the department heads who have put a lot of time in, in getting this to where it's gotten. So I just wanted to get that out there. First off, you know, this fiscal year budget is aimed at addressing a few priorities that were raised in the surveys that were sent out to you in February, March, continuing to provide high-quality services to our citizens, continuing to put an emphasis on public safety in our community, and continuing to move forwards in a return to fiscal stability. And I think that certainly does this with this current budget that's being. And I think that certainly does this with this, uh, current budget that's being presented to council. Um, just a few of the key highlights that we have. The, uh, city budget is balanced. It is, uh, staying at the same millage that it was at last year, which is 54.5. Um, we are seeing strong growth in a lot of revenue areas. Our property tax growth rate is the only one that's still, um, not moving as quickly as we would like, but we're hopeful to get there eventually. And just to briefly highlight this, the general funds, uh, proposed revenues exceed the proposed expenditures by $600,000. Um, our, our top three sources of funds are charges for services, ad valorem, uh, taxes, and state revenues. Our main use of funds, and this is typical of most municipalities, is, uh, public safety, uh, utility costs, and capital outlay. And, uh, when thanking the departments, I think a big thing to focus on is that we've reduced expenditures significantly. Um, we're at a reduction from last year's adopted budget of about $5.6 million. So departments have, uh, gone out of their way to, uh, be fiscally responsible while still continuing to provide, uh, ser- excellent services to our citizens. I think with this, this budget, we are continuing to move in the right direction. And, uh, again, very appreciative for all the hard work that has been put in by our departments. Uh, revisiting millage, the city is, uh, currently at 54.5. The proposed budget stays at 54.5. The county has stayed the same with its millage rate as well. The only difference is a decrease by the Pasagul Negotiate School District at 1.28 mills. The, uh, capital project list is, uh, quite extensive. We are getting close to, uh, ending our Recreation Bond Fund, funds. Um, for the projects that currently are tied into a variety of grants. We have, uh, MCC Park, which is, uh, going to be starting soon through, uh, Community Development Block Grants. We also have the Ingalls Avenue Road Improvements Projects, which is through the KCDBG funds. And, um, some future projects that may start in this fiscal year. Uh, and again, I say hopefully, we will, uh, have funding from the Gulf Regional Planning Commission to light Highway 90 at around 1.2 million. And then some of the other funds that were discussed in the previous budget workshops. We have the Special Tax Fund going to support Main Street funding. We also have the Special Tax Fund being transferred over about $1 million, uh, to debt service for rec bond payments. And, uh, finally, as you'll see, over these past few years, there has been a steady decrease in personnel focusing on how we can get the most efficiency out of our departments and still provide quality services to our community. As of right now, we are at 195 full-time employees. And the, the next step in this process would be the, uh, adoption of the budget and the tax levy at September 15th meeting, which is next Tuesday.
Michael, this question may, is opposed to you, it may be more for Charlene. But either way, we, you, you're projecting for fiscal year 2021 excess revenues of roughly $600,000. Do you anticipate that at some point in the fiscal year, there'll be an actual, assuming everything goes as we predict, and that $600,000 is applied to the ongoing deficit we've been carrying of roughly $10 million? Do you contemplate that there will be a transfer at some point during the fiscal year of $600,000 from the general fund to the utility fund? Or will those funds simply, I guess, accumulate, for lack of a better term, in the general fund and just simply serve as a, as a reduction of the deficit? You, you follow what I'm asking?
Charlene, okay.
Yeah, if everything goes as planned, say everything was perfect, and we get in there with $600,000 at the end of the year, it would just actually go against that general fund deficit if we went past it.
Well, I understand it would go against it, but I mean, the, the deficit, the, the deficit originated pursuant to the audit report that we had gotten two years ago, or listen, two years ago. But the audit report said that there were transfers from the utility fund to the general fund in that ballpark amount. My question is, is that do we send the money now when we're, have excess revenues back to the utility fund? Or we're just letting it accumulate in the general fund?
Just letting it accumulate in general fund. Those are two separate things. The transfers that are coming, from what I understand, the transfers that are coming from the utility funds are from, for administrative services. For, for, that, that essentially, the, the utility fund is paying the general fund for the personnel to run the utility fund.
I understand, and, and we don't have to, you know, beat the horse tonight.
Yeah, it's paying the general fund.
But, but, I, at some point, I'd like to sit down with you because, you know, with the audit and see, because the, the deficit, um, originated, as my recollection, I have the audit in front of me, from transfers that were coming from the utility fund that exceeded what probably should have been. And, and that's where this $14 million came from, that now is, for a number of reasons, is now down to 10. And I just, at some point, when we've adopted the budget and so forth, I'd like to talk about, and it may be that you're right, it can just accumulate there. But, but I figured if the debt deficit occurred because of a transfer into the general fund for the utility fund, excess revenues need to go back to where they came from. But I, I, I stand to be corrected. So I'd like to just have a, sometime after October 1st, I'd like to have a conversation about that.
Other questions for Michael? I guess at this point, we'll need to ask for any public comment, if there's anybody here from the public that'd like to have a question or a comment. We're seeing none. Do you need a, a motion on this or, uh, action on this, or we just wait till our meeting next, our next meeting?
I think we just wait till the next meeting.
This is just informational, okay. All right, um, any other comments on the budget?
I, I want to applaud the two of you and other members of the city staff. First of all, the presentation was fabulous as far as what it looks like now. And that's not a criticism of anybody before, but there was just a lot of stuff that, that this council has had to look at over the last three fiscal years. And, and I think once the dust finally settled, it, now you can sort of, you're not worried about how are we gonna be able to rob Peter to pay Paul now, or have to go borrow the money? Now it's, it's sort of settled down, and I, it, it, it's, it's finally, in a way, the first budget we've had to adopt where we either weren't ignorant, with the exception of Scott, uh, ignorant of the process, and, and, uh, and sort of plouted by the presentation, uh, of just the, the crisis that we had at the time. And, um, it's really good, and I, and I applaud, uh, both of you, and in particular, Michael, that we've been able to come up with a $600,000 excess revenue. I mean, cross our fingers, hope to die, and that it stays that way, and we begin a path back to reducing this deficit. It's gonna take some time, and we told people when we raised the taxes two years ago, this is nothing that's going to be cured overnight, and it will take time. Uh, so I'm, I'm glad to see that we've not had to raise taxes. We actually reduced taxes last year. Um, hopefully with, uh, paying close attention to, you know, the money, uh, for the next several years, that we can eliminate this deficit. And, you know, we can all take a big sigh of relief, uh, and, and press on with, uh, the things that the city badly needs. So I, I just wanted to tell you, thank you very much.
Amen. And also for our staff, you know, we've kind of right-sized our staff to kind of build a team and get the right people in place, and we've done that. And that's been a big part of the budget too, is just, uh, making sure that we have the right numbers. So it looks like we've gotten there. All right, well, um, can I hear a motion then that we recess till Tuesday, September 15th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m.? Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Words negatives or positives, and positives for negatives?
Yeah.